The hour now being seven o'clock, I will call this special town meeting of the Town of West Bridgewater to order. I would ask that you please silence your cellphones. And I'd like to thank the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School for setting up the auditorium for tonight. Thank you to West Bridgewater Cable Access for being here. Thank you to the Board of Selectmen's Office and the Town Clerk's Office for arranging everything for tonight. And thank you to you, the voters, for being here. If you wish to speak during the town meeting, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Please address all conversation through the moderator, and above all, be respectful of one another. At this time, I would ask you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation, and to our work in this world.
Thank you. I would ask the Town Clerk to read the materials for warrants.
To either of the constables of West Bridgewater in the county of Plymouth, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I hereby direct you to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of West Bridgewater qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School Auditorium in said town on October 26, 2017, at 7:00 PM. Then they are to act on the following articles to wit. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of West Bridgewater qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at the time and place within mentioned by posting fifteen attest copies of within warrant at various locations throughout Precinct 1 and 2, fourteen days at least before or foresaid special town meeting. Bruce Alhong, Constable, Town of West Bridgewater.
Thank you. Article 1, Mr. Anderson.
Shaun Anderson, Assistant Director of the DPW. Can you hear me now?
If you can hear me up in the sound booth, could you turn the microphones up, please?
Hello? Shaun Anderson, Assistant DPW Director. To move that the Town vote to transfer for free cash, a sum of, not to exceed $380,000, to be expended by the Director of Public Works to purchase up to two commercial trucks.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, Finance Committee.
I am working.
Approved by the Voice, like my man, so. Can we get these microphones up?
I'm work using myself, and Jerry will take the mic. The Finance Committee voted four to one, in favor with one abstention, one recusal in favor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Board of Selectmen. Approved by unanimous vote of Board of Selectmen. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yep. So I'm looking to replace a 1993 and a 1998 dump truck, F-800, with two 64,000 commercial dump trucks. I've been working with Billy Lucini on these trucks for the last five months, specing them out and all that, going to the place and looking at these trucks. We came to a conclusion they're going to be Western Star trucks, cabin chassis, and these trucks will be outfitted from Donovan equipment with, that we've dealt with for the last eight years. These trucks will be outfitted with 11-foot plow power angle, 10-yard sanders, and a wet system that they call with these trucks that we use for calcium to mix with our salt. So I'm looking, so I come to you, the people of West Bridgewater, to support the decision of these trucks.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the voters?
Shaun, could you elaborate on the current condition of the trucks for us?
The 93 F-800, right now, is probably, we've got about maybe $53,000, but it's a 93, it's about 24 years old. Right now, they're in tough shape with wiring harness problems, frame is, the frames are very rusted, disatmoscale, and that's a safety issue. So it's come to the point that we had to draw a line saying that either we start putting money into these trucks, or we get these new trucks. The 98 is newer, but it's a lot rougher shape. It's got about 48,000 miles on it, 48,000 miles on it, and it's the same thing with the salt and the calcium that we use. Back then, we have a different maintenance plan on these new trucks, and from here on, with the trucks we have now, that these trucks were, they're in bad shape to the place it's a safety issue. So, we can put money into these trucks, or we can go the other way.
Questions or comments, Mr. Conley?
Neil Conley, 376 Walnut Street. I approve this. I've done my best to say I approve it, who cares? But last meeting, was this a borrowing issue? And we tabled it, it was always this? All right. Where's the money coming from? Now, if you, can you just tell us how we generate that kind of money to spend this kind of money?
Yep, no problem. It comes from what we call free cash, which is money left over that was not spent last year, an additional revenue that came in. So we generated about $1.1 million of additional free cash from last year. Out of that $1.1 million, we're asking to spend $380,000 to purchase these two trucks.
And then we have a surplus of what's left, or what you just said, 1.7 million?
Yeah, so we have a little over $700,000 left afterwards.
And where do we get that money from? Like, people like, I'm late on my taxes when I pay that, that counts as it, things like that, fees and excise tax or?
So excise tax is estimated receipt, so we expect that to come in. Obviously, it is additional charges, that's part of the revenue, but for the most part, it's normally generated from new growth. As we know, we have new homes coming in, new businesses coming in, so they add to the tax levy, so that helps us generate free cash or additional surplus at the end of the year.
Can I just say something, Mr. Moderator? Just, we built a brand-new school, and I don't know why we don't have a PowerPoint where we can show these trucks we're going to buy, whatever, show the town people what they're actually getting for the money. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Lucini?
We will see 45 Keenwood Street. I was the one, last time, to get up and ask for a table on these trucks. And I can tell you, since that time, I didn't believe that they were the right trucks and specked out correctly. I will tell you, Shaun and I have spent a lot of time together, we've done field trips looking at equipment, and we changed specifications, and I now believe that the town will have the finest municipality trucks that they will ever have, okay? We spent a lot of time on this, we put a lot into it. Shaun and I still disagree on a couple of issues, but it's okay. I don't run his department. He says he needs them, he's the guy that's responsible for that, not me. But I can tell you that what we went through and everything, when we get these trucks, we'd be proud to have them, and they will be, they will work, and they will work for a long time, okay?
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing and I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 2, Ms. Cambria.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, Charlotte Cambria, 1 Wallace Way. Move that the Town vote to permanently designate the portion of land at 99 West Center Street as municipal recreational parkland.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, Finance Committee.
Of the five members present, we voted to refer to voters, five to zero.
Board of Selectmen?
Selectmen voted in favor unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
This is to move the 9/11 memorial to a place where it will be permanently preserved. It will eliminate any issues with it being next to the building if any time during the future, the building had to move, or the police and fire had to move locations, they wouldn't have to move the memorial.
Any questions or comments from the voters? Mr. Conley?
Neil Conley, 376 Walnut Street. I never knew we had a 9/11 location. I know at the last town meeting, they wanted to put it to fight a comment. Is there another place that we didn't know about, or is someplace new? That's a question.
It's the same memorial, it's the same one, and it's being moved, it's the same exact thing, it's just being moved over to the grassy area.
First of all, I don't even, do we have a 9/11 memorial? Last time I heard about it was at the last town meeting, they brought up, we have a memorial. Has anybody seen it? Is it already up and running?
Mr. Lawrence?
There is a very nice memorial in front of the fire station right now. It's a large, black granite engraved stone along with a piece of steel from the World Trade Center that was, I believe, our fire department, we have a deputy chief here. They actually drove to New York and brought it back, and this will actually create a designated park, which is required if we ever get any funding, but it's going to be moved from where it is over to the sideline.
Yeah, Neil, Deputy Chief from West Bridgewater. Neil, we built it up 10, 12 years ago, we went to New York City, got a, a piece of iron from the World Trade Center, and it's been on display in front of the fire station since we got it. It's been mounted there, and it's been, we have a stone that's been engraved with the actual skyline of New York City with a lot of bravery. That's right in front of the building, they must not come to visit us very often and say...
I wrote the police thing.
But our idea is to build a beautiful memorial, the field to the riding station is what we want, make a permanent memorial, they ask people to come visit. But, right, if we want to build it there, the problem is we had to expand it, and the fire station, do zoning and everything else, is what we're trying to do, okay?
I'm not against them, but now, just, on the land, where's it going on the land? Is it gonna, this is, will you relocate it? Will you relo-
The riding station is a field.
Yeah. Right there.
But we'll set up all the plans.
All right, that's fine. All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing and I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Those opposed, no.
No!
Motion carries by majority vote. Article 3, Ms. Cambria.
Move that the Town vote to appropriate a sum of $60,000 from the West Bridgewater Community Preservation Fund, of which up to $21,245 shall be appropriated from the Open Space Reserve Fund, and up to $38,755 shall be appropriated from the undesignedated fund balance as of June 30, 2017, in accordance with Chapter 44B of the Mass General Laws as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee under the categories of open space and recreation to be expended to create a 9/11 memorial park on municipal parkland at 99 West Center Street, Map 39, Parcel 003, as approved in Article 2 of the special town meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, Finance Committee.
Of the five members present, we voted five to zero to refer to voters.
Board of Selectmen?
Selectmen recommend unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
This is the actual project to create the 9/11 memorial on the parkland adjacent to the fire and police station.
Questions or comments from the voters?
Our Cabral, 77 Walnut Street, this one, there's no borrowing here, this is all funds we actually have sitting in accounts, and is it going to include, when you develop the park, parking around in that area? Because right now, the only access, I believe, is through the police and fire parking lots.
I believe there will be, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Hayward?
Good evening. Howard Hayward, East Center Street. I'm opposed to the approval of this warrant article, and I'll explain why. First, I want to make it very clear to everyone, I'm not opposed to a memorial. We have one existing, I'm not opposed to it being moved to this parkland. What I am opposed to is, I believe that it's inappropriate to use the community preservation funds for this project. Also, I'm opposed to the cost being proposed. $60,000 out of community preservation funds, number one. We have other community preservation projects, other projects we want to use, historic documents from the Town Clerk, they do a wonderful job preserving historical documents. We could use money for that. We can expand upon other projects. We could put more money aside to actually acquire open space. $58,000, $60,000 could have gone a long way to doing even more stone restoration walk at work at Memorial Park. I was taken by a comment I saw in an article in the Enterprise, July or August, when a person had, being interviewed, had referred to open space as wasted space. I find that a contradiction, and I find it insincere to, on one hand, consider open space as wasted space, but yet present an article to use money from the community preservation fund for preservation of this open space slash recreation parkland. I find it a bit of a contradiction and insincere. And I don't know if there's any plans, any sketches of what this would look like, how big, how expansive this would be. Is it more than one flag? How many flags? Is it going to be lit? What's the cost analysis of materials? What's the cost analysis of annual cost of perhaps lighting or anything else? There's no plans, it's just something that came up, that one person wants this done, which I don't agree with, again, having a memorial expanded and moved. But I feel, again, this is inappropriate for the funding source, and I don't believe that $60,000 is appropriate amount of money. I mean, I have to ask you all the question. How much money is enough to prove that we're very sensitive to this particular issue, a memorial of this stature? How much is enough? We have to think about this, and we have to think rationally, not about the context of it, but about the appropriateness of the funding and the cost.
Mr. Anatelli?
Christian Anatelli, I'm going to think of my address, 268 South Allen Street. I moved. First of all, to address the comment that open space is wasted land, that is not what was said. The question came from the Enterprise of whether the land, the grassy area next to the police and fire could be used, and the answer was, it could be used because it's just wasted grass area right now. In other words, it was an open area, had nothing to do with a comment being made about open space being wasted. We have spent almost a million dollars, I believe, out of CPA money. We have spent almost a half a million in the park. We have spent projects on restoration of assessors records, town hall records, public library records. We have had an array, we fixed the first church. The money is spent as applications come in. Everybody gets a piece of it. This particular project is an opportunity for us to, as Shallow mentioned, get the 9/11 memorial away from the police and fire building where it is now, which, if in a few years the building is expanded, this could be an issue. We've designated in that first warrant article that the land is now parkland, which means it be maintained forever by the town as parkland, okay? There is a funding page that the police and fire have set up. The $60,000 will pay for the pot scape, the granite, the brickwork, the flag poles, the lighting, possibly irrigation, okay? The pot's going to be done more bright, and it may perpetually, like every other park in this town, by the Town of West Bridgewater. So this is not something that's just a fly-by-night type of project. We have planned this, we have sketches of it, we don't have a final sketch because it'll have to go off the bid, like any project this size, but it will put the beam, the granite memorial, and on top of this, if you're familiar, we have one of the best 9/11 displays every year on September 11th, and that is done by a resident in this town, and this will help him enhance that display by putting it over in the grassy area, he will be able to bring in all the different things that he does when he puts that display up. So, it's well thought out, it is CPA money. CPA, and on that last comment that was made, this has been totally cleared by the Coalition that it's acceptable. This is a parks project that is totally acceptable. We have a consultant that is 100% sure that this project fits the category. We would not be doing this if it wasn't. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one thing about the money. A lot of the projects that the CPA is involved in, if they all, if anything comes in under budget, so if this comes in under budget, the money does get put back. It's watched by the town accountant, and it does get put back into the general fund for future projects.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Lawrence.
I would just like to point out, this isn't one man's wish to have this park. Our fire department, our police department, the Board of Selectmen, there are a lot of people in this room that were directly affected by 9/11. If you don't know, Mr. Gay lost his brother. My entire career was turned upside down, along with my partner and my family, so it's very, I'm appalled that you would say this is just something that one man wants. Some might believe our town wants, and if you spend a day with Billy Cavadas, that does an outstanding job on September 11th, and see the kids that stop by there every year, and the people, and the adults, and just people that are from other communities that stop by and they cry, and they remember, and it's very, every kid from our school system goes there over visits. It's appalling that you say it's one person. I highly respect your desire to preserve open space. We've probably reserved more open space and farmland in this town in the last 10 years than we ever have in the history of our town. We've made great progress in that, and this is something that a lot of people want, it's not just one person. I assure you, it's not just one person.
Jason Ross, 325 Crescent Street. Two questions. The first question is, has this project been approved by the zoning board? Because I believe that parks have to be approved by them. And the second question is, are the sketches, blueprints, whatever, available for the public to view? Thank you.
In reference to ZPA, you're absolutely correct. Once town meeting is now designated the land as a park, then the permit will be filed with the zoning board appeals, and they will, the issue will permit at that point for it to be a park. And there are preliminary plans, I've seen them, I don't know if you have them with you, Chris, but I do know that we have, but I've seen them, so if you know that we have preliminary plans.
They could be posted on the website or something, that'd be pretty helpful.
Thank you.
Neil Conley, 376 Walnut Street. I just wanted to respond to what Jerry said, it should be your Paul. It was a sad day, I know where I was, but at the last town meeting, they said one person came here and spoke, they were having an issue with it was historic or something like that, and then our moderator excused himself and talked to the lawyer for advice, and I don't know if that was ever cleared up. Everybody has a heart, everybody's seen what happened that day, even the maggots that did it. Now, what he's talking about, the gentleman that just left here, there's nothing up on that screen that shows what it's going to look like, or the plans, how much land it is. I keep asking this question, it would leave, alleviate a lot of this crap when people come up here, because they're thinking in their minds and talking up here. But never, never, we have to guess what we're doing here, guess what you're doing, think you're being sneaky, you don't want to tell us what's going on, but we spend the money. The 9/11 memorial, it's a shame on me, I didn't know we had it in the town, but the lady that came here last time, she said, "I have a piece of steel," and the way she described it, don't even come the way it was from the previous speaker, all these things. A lot of people are jumping on board now, or they're just left in the dark. So whatever he said before is 100% right. There's no diagram, there's no blueprint or anything. You're going to just put it there, like Chris Anatelli says, there's a lot of that already done, but if you had it up there on PowerPoint, you wouldn't have this.
You know what, Travis, are there any other questions from the voters?
Howard Hayward, East Center. I thought I made myself clear when I said that there is not a person in this room or in this community that is sensitive to that event, or those events on that day, but this is not about that. We should be here thinking rationally and not through emotion, not raising emotion. There's not a person in this community, I believe, that is not loyal to our country. It has not as much to do with that. It's the appropriateness of the funding source and the cost. And again, there's no diagram, not a one of us knows what it's going to look like when it's done. We should have input, that's what we're here for, to engage in civil discourse and know what we're voting on. This warrant article is asking us to vote on something we have no idea what it's going to look like when it's done, and I am in favor of moving the current memorial, because it's not really visible. I agree, and designated that parcel of land to parkland and putting a memorial there, but how big is it going to be? What are the annual costs, operating costs of maintenance and perpetuity? These are not being answered. What I'm hearing is emotion. I think we deserve, as residents, as voters, to know more information about this. I am of the opinion, and I didn't know that there was a GoFundMe page apparently to help with this. My opinion, in sense of community, is sending out notices to residents, to who wants to volunteer with help with the construction, what we can do, to involve the community in proceeding and helping develop this and bring this to a greater reality. I'd be willing to grab a shovel, how about selling bricks for a certain amount of money, put the name on it, help fund this project. And again, I'm not disagreeing on the project. It's appropriateness of the funds and it's the extent of expansion of the project. That's it. Let's leave a motion aside here. This is a sensitive issue for all of us, but leave that outside, okay? But just discuss facts.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing and I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes!
Those opposed, no.
No!
Passes by majority vote. Yes?
Y'all want to vote?
Somebody saying something? Article 4. There's seven people? Stand up if you want to count a vote. Okay, you can sit down. Do I have four volunteers to come forward to serve as tellers, please?
Do I have four volunteers to come forward to service tellers, please? Three should be sufficient. Please, the meeting is still in order. One of the clerks wears in the tellers. You were given a white card when you came in. You will need that card to vote. Okay, order, please. All those in favor, hold your white card up and do not put it down until I say to put it down. Please. Okay, you can put your cards down. All those opposed, raise your cards and hold them up, please, until the count is over. The motion carries by a vote of 43 yes to 34 no. Article four, Ms. Cambridge.
Move that the town vote to appropriate a sum of $12,277 from the West Bridgewater Community Preservation Fund, of which up to $12,277 shall be appropriated from the undesignated fund balance as of June 30th, 2017, in accordance with Chapter 44B of the Massachusetts General Laws as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee under the category of Historic Preservation to be expended for the restoration of eight historic bronze plaques, seven currently located in Bull Memorial Park, and one to be relocated to the park from Town Hall.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, Finance Committee.
Of the five members present, we voted 5 to 0 to refer to voters.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen, vote unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
The plaques that are displayed, I'm sorry. Did you hear them say something?
No, whoever.
They're going to be taken off and they take them back to the shop and they restore them and put them back.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes. These are plaques. I don't know if anybody's seen the plaques that's up in front of the Town Hall. A lot of the, a lot of the people found there, the names, you can't even recognize. I mean, they're in horrible shape. I have a associate up in Brockton running Bethany, who's here as president, and I talked to him about and discussed this with him. And we also have seven more at the park that are in horrible. You can't even read the names. And he showed me, which he has a, some of the things that you've done for the town of Mansfield. And these have never been taken care of and the names are not eligible. You can't even, a lot of those people are neighbors of mine. Rawa too, and you can't even recognize names. So we decided now, this still has to go up a bit to go over $10,000. And this is not done. But we spent quite a lot of research in this and trying to come up there. And it's not just like something that anybody can do because some things are ruined. Now, this price will also, anything that's mounted to a stone, you will dismount it and go put it back in there. I was asked, well, how come you don't ask the people of South Eastern Regional to do it? Which they do a lot of things for us there. But this is very, very privileged professional stuff there. Not that the kids wouldn't do a good job over there. But I have discussed it and I don't know if the moderator will like to, Ron is here with us tonight and he can probably further us on what will be done and how it will be done.
If a moderator will allow, Ron Bethany, maybe explain a little bit more. If the voters have any questions or comments, we'll hear those first. If the voters have no objection, we will let Mr. Bethany speak. Are there any voters that wish to speak? Would you like to hear Mr. Bethany?
Yes.
Mr. Bethany, the microphone is yours.
Good evening. My name is Ron Bethany. I am the owner of New England Grass Refinishing. I've been in business all my life, five generations. And I'm very proud of the work we do. And I want to thank all the people in West Bridgewater for the concern. You're doing a great job. What I just finished, I just accomplished refinishing the Paul Revere Foundry Casta Bell for the town of Mansfield. And I had the great pleasure and honor of restoring this bell. And I have pictures with me. I'd like to show, I'll show everybody in back as well. Good. I'll turn them up. Those are photographs of before and after plaques that we have done for the town of Mansfield. In the center is the picture of the Paul Revere Bell. And everybody here, you're all welcome. Come down to my shop. I still have it in storage. I got to keep it there until March. You're all welcome to come and look at it. I'll ring your fire. I mean, the thing is bad.
You can walk around with it when they don't see you.
We all need to check down.
Yeah, walk around.
Walk up the aisles with it. I don't want to hurry, Mr. Bethany, but if he moves along, we continue the meeting. Are there any other questions or comments from the voters?
If this is working, apparently.
Hearing none, I'll call.
Is this on?
No, there's no mic.
Well, the United Nations is watching this order of laws. I'll watch that.
A few steps, you know.
Boy, I'm trying to save your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cabral. Art Cabral, Walnut Street. Just to be clear, this article, we're appropriating the money. As nice as Mr. Bethany's work is, we're, you're not voting to hire him with this article, correct? This is still going to go out to bid. That's all. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article five, Deputy Chief May.
Kenny May, 492 Spring Street. Move that the town vote to expand from fiscal year 2018 fire department budget of $2,200, a sum of $1,943.17, to provide for a previous fiscal year's commitment expenditure as follows. $1,914.37 from line 5240 property maintenance and $28.80 from line 5500 ambulance supplies.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, Finance Committee.
Of the five members present, we voted unanimously to recommend this article.
Board of Selectmen.
Board unanimously to accept this article.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I was told there's just, there's four bills. Two came in after the due date and two were just overlooked.
If we haven't turned around, face the idea. Give me the log if your mind made up. These people have it. Yeah, you should be talking to these people.
There's four bills that were overlooked. Two came in late and two overlooked at the end of the fiscal year budget. It wasn't the fact we had money that actually turned in. It wasn't from lack of money we had. And that's all.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the voters? Because this is old bills, it does require a nine tenths vote. And I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. The vote is unanimous, so nine tenths doesn't make a difference. Article six, Mr. Hurley.
Mr. Moderator, Hugh Hurley, 113 Howard Street. I'm the chairman of the planning board. Move that the town vote to accept, in accordance with Chapter 82, Sections 22 and 24 of the Massachusetts General Laws, rescinding lane as the town way is approved by the planning board, filed with the town clerk and recorded in the registry of deeds.
Is there a second? It's been moved in seconded, Finance Committee.
Of the five members present, we voted unanimously to recommend this article.
Board of Selectmen. Selectmen recommend unanimously. Would you like to speak to the other?
If I may, Mr. Moderator. This is, I've been before you many times. Every time a road is completed, a subdivision road is completed, everything is all done. The last thing to do is to accept it as a town way. These people are paid, they're grand new houses, they're paying good taxes on it. They deserve to be on a public way. And it also gives us credit for the mileage, for the given reimbursement for the state because we have to take care of them. It's kind of a bookkeeping thing. They've done everything they should. Now it's time for us to accept it.
Okay. Questions or comments from the voters? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. The motion carries unanimously. Article seven, Mrs. Ann Teller.
Move that the town vote to amend Article nine of the town's general bylaws by adding Section six as printed on the warrant.
Is there a second? It's been moved in seconded, Finance Committee.
Of the five members present, we voted unanimously to refer to voters.
Board of Selectmen. Board recommends unanimously. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure. This is just so that if there's any mistakes in any of the articles that come before town meeting with the numbering or capitalization or anything that can just be easily fixed, it does not change the bylaw in any way. It just helps easy for me to correct those mistakes without having to come back to town meeting just because I have to change a number seven to a number eight or an A to a B or whatever.
Questions or comments from the voters? Mr. Cabral. Just curious. Up until recently, we had a bylaw review committee in town of residents in town that go over with this stuff. Seems like this is something naturally would just go through committee like that? In the, even if in the event it, the bylaw review committee gets brought up again, is reconvened, maybe at least add, would the bylaw review committee would have this opportunity? I mean, it seems like if we had that ability for a long time, we had a committee actually reviewing proposed bylaws. People had input. The way this is now, basically, the input isn't there until the town meeting itself, when you're going to be voting on it. So it does need to be corrected so it's in.
So it does need to be corrected, so it's in it, but if you had the review committee, they could just do this at the time, as it's being reviewed, before it gets presented to the meeting, and people would have a better chance of knowing what's in it before it gets to the town meeting.
Well, and basically, what, if you read it, it says that most of the corrections, you know, need to be made prior to coming to the town meeting, but, so basically, there would, there is a review, and actually, they do a great job of reviewing a lot of them, but this would be just in case something didn't happen, and, you know, so that we didn't have to come back and, and change it. But most of the bylaws are reviewed and come in really good shape to the town meeting. I'm, I'm not sure if that's what you were asking.
Well, I guess we actually had a formal bylaw review committee, my understanding, that hasn't, the last couple of proposals that have come up haven't actually gone through a bylaw review committee. They've been proposed, basically, whether, whatever group brought it up, but hadn't gone through a separate committee that we had had, that reviewed it, and then put it together to present it to town meeting. We had quite a few of those, um, over the years, that I recall, we had a lot of discussion that could have, you know, because people know that that's coming up, they've got people on the committee that are reviewing it as it goes, it doesn't just pop up at the meeting right away. So I mean, they, when they were doing that, they could go through and make these kind of corrections, it never should get to the point that you'd have to do it right before town meeting, right? I understand this as being a, like a technical correction, but the overall point of what gets reviewed in terms of what gets presented to the town, we used to have that, and you had people coming up from the review committee that actually discussed what was in the proposed bylaw change. I think that's, seems to be missing right now.
Actually, if I can address that, when there are major bylaws being proposed, a specialty review board will be put together, that of people that have interest in specialty in that field, so say if there's something about zoning, there'll be a bylaw study committee or a bylaw review committee put together to review that special bylaw with people with that as their specialty in their field, but when Annie's talking about, because all our bylaws still go through town council, and then they go on to the attorney general, but this just allows her to correct grammatical errors and typos without going back to town
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Article eight.
Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to modify the qualifications of the members of the Agriculture Commission, established in Article 31 of June 7, 2010, annual town meeting, to require that the commission shall consist of not less than three, but no more than seven members, who shall be residents of West Bridgewater, a majority of which shall be farmers or employed in an agriculture-related field, and further that the farmers or person employed in agriculture are not available to serve on the commission, that the commission shall include a majority of members with knowledge and experience in agriculture practices, or knowledge of related agriculture business.
Is there a second? The movement's seconded, Finance Committee.
Of the five members present, we voted five to zero to refer to voters.
Board of Selectmen.
Selectmen recommend unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, this is a real simple explanation, as you know, we have problems getting a lot of our boards, commissions, and committees, uh, the vacancies filled, this one had some very specific requirements, that the members be in agriculture or have agriculture interests, and this would just allow us to lower the numbers, quite often, they don't have quorums, because with a seven-member board that it currently is, uh, you would need at least a majority of them actually there, with numerous vacancies, they can't even have a quorum, regardless of every active member shows up. Uh, so this would just give us the flexibility to drop the number down.
Questions or comments from the voters? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Before I call for a motion to dissolve this meeting, I have two moments of personal privilege. The first I will take, I would like to acknowledge two people that I believe are both still here, one I know is, I don't know if Ben Smith from, of course, we're doing a cable access, is still in the house, but I've been told that today, both Ben and Selectman Anthony Kinnahan have birthdays. So happy birthday to. And Selectman Lawrence, as chairman of the Board of Selectmen, has asked for a moment of personal privilege.
Mr. Moderator and members of the public that are here tonight, first of all, thanks for coming. Recently, we received some, some bad news, but some, some very great news, we'd have a member of our staff that has really grown over the last almost ten years, uh, that's contributed unbelievable, um, efforts and time, uh, as if she were a born and raised resident here in West Bridgewater. Uh, it's with sadness, but also malorie, with great happiness, that you move on to become the administrator, indicted. We congratulate you and thanks for your many, many years of outstanding service to West
Is there a motion to dissolve?
Motion.
Is there a second?
I'd like to, I'd like to ask a question. This is directed to the Board of Selectmen. The water department knew nothing about this meeting coming up, and the administrative assistant and Board of Selectmen knew that we had a number of projects underway, and we were underfunded because we had to use, at the annual town meeting, all our money to cover short-term borrowing, so we, we had to start some projects underfunded, and it was understood by us and the Board of Water Commissioners and the Board of Selectmen that when the special town meeting would be coming up. So at the meeting, we found out that we, that this town meeting was coming up, and we said, yes, let Mr. Gagny know that we got a couple articles that we gotta get in there, because we have surplus and we can keep these projects moving. It was told to us by Mr. Gagny, back to the next meeting, that the meeting, that this agenda was closed, we couldn't get any articles on it, and if we were gonna have another special town meeting, the water department was gonna have to pay for it. I don't think that that is right, okay? I don't know where that comes from, but Mr. Gagny's an employee, okay? Did you guys take a vote and tell the water department that they're gonna have to pay for a special town meeting?
Speak up, don't shut up. First, I never said that. I have.
You didn't?
No, I did not. Second, I'm in my office every day, somebody could have asked a question to me, nobody did.
Well, why didn't you?
Let me answer the question.
Why didn't you call me, or why didn't somebody on the board tell us this meeting was coming up?
So, Mr. Moderator, the entire questioning here is inappropriate for town meeting.
Yes. It is not appropriate.
If your board has an issue with, with our employee, you're welcome to come to one of our meetings, like we've done numerous times, Mr. Kruger, just like we, just like we would do if we.
We should be all members.
Just like what you would do.
Sit down.
If we had an issue.
You are on the board, sir.
Just like we would do if we had an issue with any one of your employees, Mr. Kruger.
You recognized it, he's speaking.
Yes, but he's going.
Jerry Southern Florida, he's here now.
Is there, there is a motion to dissolve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor.
All in the town, all signed.
Meeting dissolved.
About the special town meeting.